And we are recording and welcome everyone to the Barnstable County Commissioners Democratic Forum, originally set up by the Outer Cape Dems. We appreciate them and the CIDC. We appreciate everybody being here. We appreciate our candidates being here. The way we're going to set things up is to allow our three candidates a brief one-minute opening hello type of statement that you can make. I do have my timer set up here. So you'll probably hear that beep when you get to the minute on that. We'll go into the question part of the forum. You'll have two minutes to respond to each question. Again, we're emphasizing people, this is a forum type of an event so that we can hear from our candidates about their position on the important issues to people here on the Cape. So that's the way we have that set up. There'll be a two-minute closing statement also. I also mentioned to the candidates before that they are welcome to drop into the chat any information they want folks to have in terms of contact, whether it's emails, websites, Facebook pages, et cetera. So feel free to have those put in the chat also. And to make people aware that in chat, if you're on a computer, you go and chat, there's three dots on the bottom right-hand that allow you to save the chat as a text file. So if you want to save it and go back to anything that was in there, you're able to do so. So again, with a reminder for people, please keep yourselves on mute and keep your videos off of the time being. I would like to start and Cheryl, if you would, please give your one-minute opening statement.
All right, Steve. Thank you so much. And thank you to all of you for joining us. As you're all aware, this is a campaign like no other. I guess that matches a time like no other. And I'm happy to introduce myself. My name is Cheryl Andrews, and I'm a candidate. And in the first minute, I'll just mention a couple of quick things. One is I'm a dentist. I have a private practice in Provincetown. And I have an extensive 30-year record of service in my municipality, both as a selectman, Board of Health, Water and Sewer. I could keep you busy telling you about things that I've been involved in. I also have 10 years in county that have kept me pretty busy. And, you know, just a lot of different hobbies that would be fun to talk about as well. I think fundamentally, to get to know me, you'll need to know a little bit about my personal background. But mainly, I would finish my minute by talking about my style of leadership. You know, we-
Five seconds.
What?
Five seconds.
Oh, well, we'll talk about my style of leadership later, but it's collaborative. Thank you.
All right. And Sheila, if you would start.
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to see a lot of familiar names. And hello to people I do not know. I'm Sheila Lyons. I am running because I have had this seat before. I spent eight years as county commissioner. I know the job. I know the job under duress, under financial duress. When I was elected, it was 2008, and the reception, the Great Recession had hit. I learned a lot of lessons of fiscal responsibility and how to do more with less and keep a ship afloat and make it work better. And we did a lot of preparation for the future, and a lot of that has borne fruit over the last 10 years. The county is in a good place right now. And I am running because I care about the county government. I think it needs leadership that can step in day one. I am that person. I have seen sort of the damage done by the last couple of commissioners and not the present one that's here with us today and not the other one. So more to come.
It's time. Thank you. And Mark Forrest, sir.
Thanks, Steve. And good evening, everybody. I want to join the other two candidates in saying wow at the turnout tonight. This is amazing. It says something about, I think, the race and the importance of the issues facing Cape Cod. I am Mark Forrest. I am running because I want to bring new energy, leadership to county government. I also want to make sure that we replace the incumbent who actually, I think, has weakened county government considerably and had an impact in terms of its credibility and respect. My background is I teach American government at Cape Cod Community College. I also am involved in creating a master's degree program with Suffolk University. I worked for Suffolk. And starting in the fall, we're going to have a new MPA degree program here on Cape Cod. It's a, it's part of an effort here to build a bench of municipal leaders, nonprofit leaders, and healthcare leaders on the Cape. And that's a very exciting development. I'm a selectman in Yarmouth. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen. I was recently-
And we're at time.
Thank you.
Thank you. There. Minute goes by awfully, awfully quick there. But you'll have all two minutes on answers here. So let me just reset, reset that for two minutes there. And there's a lot of interesting questions that came from people. And I'm going to start with one that I think you'll all be able to knock out of the, out of the ballpark on this. There was a question about whether county commissioners and the Assembly of Delegates, basically that whether county government has outlived its purpose, whether the types of issues we face today are things that are best handled or able to be handled at the county level. So you wouldn't be running, I believe, unless you thought so. So I want to give you a chance to be able to respond to that. And we will start with Sheila on this. Two minutes, please.
I'm mute. I apologize, Steve. Could you be, could you, could you repeat that question?
I sure can. The question had to do with whether county government, the county commissioners and Assembly of Delegates, whether county government has kind of outlived its use, given the types of issues that we have today.
Okay, I get that. All right, I can go from there. No, I don't think it's outlived its use. I think it's just getting into its swing. I think there was a period, look, it was only reconstituted in 1989. So we're technically 30 years, 31 years old. It took a while for it to really kind of figure out what its place was, what its mission. I think that I brought that, a lot of that to the table of trying to direct it to what it can do and what it should do. We are a regional government. The reason I am running, I care very greatly about this. It was reconstituted to take care of the issues that transcend the boundaries of the towns, the big regional issues that the towns do not have the capacity to handle, particularly the smaller towns. And even the larger towns like Falmouth, Barnstable, Yarmouth, they also have limited resources, and they're going to have even more limited resources in the future. The county government is the convener, the person, the government that brings leadership around an issue, brings the stakeholders and the towns together to build collaboration, to have one voice on particular issues so that we can have the strength of one voice and get grant money, federal money, state money. We are just coming into our own. It keeps also taxpayer dollars on Cape Cod. If we didn't have county government, those taxes would go up to the state general fund, and we'd still be fighting for little bits here and there. This keeps a certain part of money here, so we can concentrate that on the efforts of wastewater, clean water, coastal erosion. How are we going to adapt? There's no longer how are we going to change climate change? How are we going to adapt to the climate change forces around us? How are we going to build a public health system in light of COVID? How are we going, these are things that the towns do not have all of the resources to do, the technology, they don't have the capacity. The county government has saved the towns more money in the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mark, if you would continue on that.
County government here is an underperforming asset. When it's well-led and well-run, it can do amazing things. When it's poorly, let's put it this way, when it's not, not well-led, not much gets done. We're facing some major issues. And over the years, when I've worked with Congressman Studs on his staff and Congressman Delon, we worked in partnership with our leadership and county government. And we did some amazing things together. A county government helped us in terms of developing a master plan for the Massachusetts Military Reservation to make sure that over the years ahead, we would protect the water supplies of the upper Cape and make sure that it was thoroughly cleaned up. And we had consensus for the uses of the base, something that we had not really had at all in the mid-'90s when people were clamoring for the base to shut down. So that was a very, very important exercise. The county has also played a major role in getting affordable housing resources here. I worked with the county commissioners in the mid-'80s to get the Cape designated as a home consortium, which is a fairly large bucket of money, federal money, to deal with affordable housing problems here on the Cape. I've also worked with the county commissioners in years past where we got a significant amount of federal funding to create what is called Open Cape, a fairly massive broadband network that was initially led by the county in terms of developing its plan. But the funding came, you know, from the federal government principally, but also with some state funding. It takes county leadership to make these things happen. In Yarmouth, we finally launched Phase One in our wastewater plans. And but for the county, we would not have had the kind of support that's needed region-wide to get our wastewater problems underway. So we've got a very good plan. The county's playing an excellent role under what is called the Clean Water 208 Program and developing a comprehensive plan. The county commissioners years ago played an instrumental role in creating-
And we're at time. Thank you.
What was that, Steve?
We're at time. That's your two minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Cheryl.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to demonstrate that I'm a bit older than I look and say that one of the first votes I took when I came home from dental school was on the new county charter. And I was very proud to do it. The Cape was under an amazing amount of stress at the time. There was a lot of construction, a lot of issues, and people felt we needed something else. And we got the Cape Cod Commission, we got the county government, and it was, it was a great vote. Unfortunately, and let me say this, as a selectman, for a long time, I know what the county does to help towns by providing either health department services, group savings, skill sets from IT. They do a lot of consolidated information. The GIS flyover was mentioned at our last meeting, absolutely one fabulous thing that the county does. But unfortunately, we haven't had great leaders at county that are out teaching, you know, the voters what county government has done, which is very disappointing to those of us that are involved in care. And secondly, you know, we're in a very different situation now than we've ever been. We've got a public healthcare crisis. We're walking into an economic crisis. And I think the county government is absolutely situated to do even bigger and better things to help the towns through the next couple of years, which are going to be a huge challenge, particularly in the public health field. So, thank you.
Thank you. And kind of a follow-up question. Someone, someone asked about whether county government, the county commissioners should have even perhaps more sway over what happens here on the Cape Cod. Would that increase effectiveness and efficiency of services if that happened? So let me start with you on that, Mark Forrest.
So someone is suggesting that maybe the county should have more power in terms of-
Yes.
Well, I think we, I think we can accomplish a lot, quite frankly, through better collaboration and better partnership. I'm not sure we need to get, quote, "more power over local communities." I think we can work together in partnership. And it's, and it's happened a lot over the years in resolving wastewater, for example. The kind of partnership that exists, I think, is well-poised to position the Cape to get even more federal funds, more state funds, and position us to make some, some real strides here. Affordable housing, I don't think we need more authority at the county level to tackle affordable housing. I think there's, again, it's collaboration, it's coming together and developing the tools, figuring out ways to make more flexibility in the zoning. All of the talent, all the staff, all the resources are there at the county level. So I think we just need to be able to draw on that. Substance abuse, we have a county Health and Human Services Advisory Committee. They're doing some incredible things in terms of helping bring organizations together to collaborate and develop programs and initiatives to deal with the problems that are here. So I don't think we need more authority. I think with the right leadership, we can bring people together and make real progress on the challenges that are facing us.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Cheryl, thoughts on that? Does the, do county commissioners or the county government need, need more control over things happening on the Cape?
Boy, I could see trouble looming if that idea got out. No, actually, I would agree very much with Mr. Forrest's comments. The county commissioners, as currently structured, are quite capable of doing an awful lot of great work with the 15 towns. If you had 15 towns that were identical in size and identical in issues and identical in personality and frankly, built in a circle so they had equal access to everything that the county could do, then something like a more, you know, a stronger central government might work. But that's exactly what we don't have. We have a couple of large towns. Barnstable now technically meets the definition of a city. And then you've got a couple of, you know, little towns out with me, Wellfleet, Truro, and Provincetown. And our issues, of course, are very, very different. And it takes me, well, it depends on the time of year, but I can easily spend an hour and 45 minutes trying to drive to Hyannis. So, you know, we're not, we're not really in a position to function that way. Somebody would have to make the argument to me what particularly, what item they think the county could be involved in to have that conversation.
And Sheila, please.
Well, I think that the county can exercise more power and influence if it chooses to do so on the state and federal level. But to exercise that influence over the towns is not a good idea. We are there to be partners with the towns. And the towns are 15 unique and beautiful kingdoms. They are each individual, and they like to have, they have their own autonomy. So for us, and there's, you know, and this was a layer of government that it's amazing that it was passed in 1989, but it goes to show you the need. So I think that we can push as much as we want and exercise our influence and power as much as we choose to do. I think I said at one point to one of these meetings that, you know, when we, when the children were going to be housed at the base from Columbia, I was, I sent to Val Patrick an email saying, "The county is behind you." And I went back to my commissioners and said, "You know, we have to take a stand here." And they were like, "No, that's too political. We don't want to do that. We don't want to get into that." And so that, to me, was a missed opportunity of leadership and, and setting really a tone of what Cape Cod is really about. So that's a small instance. I can go into other instances where I did exercise. I kind of pushed our power and leadership when it came to N-Star and that sort of thing. I was able to call the, the environmental attorney, and I said, "You know, I don't think we're going to give you the permit from the Cape Cod Commission to lay your pipes if you don't give us a moratorium and shut down spraying so that we can kind of study this problem." That's a whole other discussion. It has a big story behind it. But you know what? They did it. So, and I just said, "You know, I'm going to just give this a try." So, because I just felt that things were hitting such a pitch that something had to be intervened there. So we can exercise our power, and I don't think it's over the towns. Our towns are who we collaborate with and partner with.
Fantastic.
Steve, I have a couple of questions in the chat.
Let's, let's hear from the chat.
Okay, the first one is, why are you best positioned to beat Ron Beatty in the general election?
And we'll start with Cheryl this time.
Oh, lucky me. You know, I certainly, I certainly thought a lot about the person we're trying to encee before I announced last Christmas. And I would say there are a couple of things I bring to the table that will give him a bit of a challenge. One is that I grew up in Barnstable, which is the town he claims is his hometown. I can tell you a fair number of Democrats, former counselors, and high school pals that are Republicans are looking very much to, forward to voting for me. So I think that'll keep him on his toes. The other is, is I've been politically involved in Provincetown now for about 30 years, and my town is known for being a little rough and tough when it comes to politics. And, and it's jokingly referred to as a blood sport. I'm not saying I'm looking forward to being abused. I fully believe it's, it's going to be ugly. It's gotten ugly already. And I'm not looking forward to it, but I know I can take it. I don't have, I have to say, I wanted to have children, but I don't have them. And I feel really bad for any public official right now that has children, because some of these bullies bully the kids too. And I know that happened in Barnstable, and it's just repulsive. So, you know, I'm ready to take the guy on. It's going to be rough and tumble. But I'd say those are the two key points, that Barnstable knows me, which is his hometown, and, and my experience 30 years here in Provincetown. I mean, we've, we've had our ups and downs here, including with a difficult police department. We went through the AIDS crisis. We're still in the middle of this pandemic. And, and it gets very difficult up here in my town. Most people have an opinion about everything, and they're not shy about saying it. And they're, you know, they go after you. So that's my answer. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sheila.
Well, Ron Beatty and I are old pals. We go way back to when I was first elected. And, you know, I was one of his, his first and favorite, you know, battering, battering objects. So I have experienced Ron Beatty. And really, one of the reasons I jumped in so late is because I didn't want to give him the opportunity to do it again. Jeff Spillane called me last summer during the fall, even in the beginning of the year, "Are you going to run?" And last summer, I was definitely like, "Don't you think this is a little early, Jeff?" And he said, "Well, a certain commissioner keeps tweeting about you. It is driving us crazy, and we want to know." And I said, "Well, we'll just say I'm thinking about it." So I enjoy kind of trying to torture him back. And, you know, I bother him. I bothered Leo. There's something about me that, and you know, it's probably because I've been effective, and I didn't pay much attention to them. While we were in the county government, and he was coming after not only myself, but the Cape Cod Commission, we were able to discover that many of the many letters that was being sent to the Cape Cod Commission were actually from him. He had a false website that looked like the Barnstable County website. So, and we have prevailed. I prevailed while I was there. And he only got in, unfortunately, I stepped down to run for Senate. So that's why he's there, and it's time for him to go. And I think I'm the best positioned to beat Ron Beatty.
Thank you. Mark Forrest, you're up.
Thank you. Well, I think we're all, we're going to all argue that we're, each one of us is the best one to take him on, and that we all have thick skin, and we're all ready for the rough and tumble. But I think what's going to be different this time around is the fact that there's a huge amount of interest in this race. Just look at the size of the people participating in this forum. There were so many people the last time around that just blanked the county commissioners' race. We can't have that happen again. We need to vote for two candidates in November, not one, not bullet voting. So our work collectively is going to be to work together, to be unified, and to push across the finish line, two candidates. So the two that emerge after the primary are going to have to work together and make it clear to people that with two, it takes two candidates to make this happen. And then the other thing that we're going to do is to tap into the energy that exists all around the Cape and is evidenced by the participation here tonight, to tap into that energy and take full use of it. In other races, can't, you know, the county commissioners' race is usually starving for volunteers and attention because there's so many other things going on. There are so many other races. But you're going to see an enormous amount of energy on the Cape to defeat Donald Trump. And you're going to see a blue wave across this country. And those that are inspired by Trump, those, those that sort of follow his philosophy, like the two convicted felons, will be running against. I think that together, there's a ton of energy out there that we can tap into and organize so that we can have a very, very strong defeat of the Republicans here on the Cape. So I'm excited about it. I'm enthused about it. The energy is, we're already organizing, we're already organizing phone banks and getting ourselves geared up for a very aggressive fight.
I have one more question, Steve.
Let me do a quick follow-up before you get to that, to that one more, because it, it bounces off something that Mark said. And Sheila, I'm going to start with you on, on this. We had a question asking, you know, assuming you get through the primary, would you want to work collaboratively with whomever the other candidate is that gets through the primary to do things like, let's put both of our names on law signs. Let's send out mailers together. Let's do digital together. Is that something that you could envision yourself doing in order to best leverage the democratic vote and, and winning both seats?
Well, unfortunately, we won't be able to join. We'll all have our own signs by then. So that, that won't save us the money by that point. But we can encourage people to put those, both signs on their lawns. And I do think that there's nothing wrong with running as a team. We're both Democrats. We're both out to, you know, make the county better and to defeat the Republicans, whether, whether it was Ron Beatty or not, I would be out to, you know, defeat the Republicans. And I don't think it's a bad thing at all. However, if people want to just vote for one of the, I mean, if that's, you know, it's going to be up to people's choices. But that choice is there. And in some ways, you're almost a team already. Pat and I, we were in a primary of five people back in 2008. We both emerged. And we were looked at as the Democratic candidates. It's just kind of given. So you don't even have to say it. It's, it's, you're already sort of made as a team if you're a Democrat and you're voting for the Democrats on the ballot that year.
Okay. And Mark, about working collaboratively.
Oh, no, no question. I'm totally on board with that. We, we have to work together. What people, what we, one of the things that we're going to have to do, by doing that is we'll be educating people as to the importance of why you need to. The way this election is structured, some, is confusing for some people. It's the two top vote-getters in November that occupy those two seats. And sometimes that's, that's not well-understood. So we need to make that very, very clear. So the answer is yes. I enthusiastically will embrace the, the other candidate, and I will look forward to campaigning together.
Great. And Cheryl.
Thank you, Steve. This topic you're raising is one, I think, that's been on our minds since, well, three, three and a half years ago, when that election went down. And, and we all woke up that morning to read the paper and started scratching our heads, thinking, you know, "It's bad enough what happened in Washington DC. How could this happen here?" And the answer very quickly was the number of blanks. There were thousands and thousands of them. I mean, Provincetown voters are pretty with it, and we had 600 blanks here. The guy only won by 1,000. So we are on a mission, no matter what happens after the, you know, when the primary is over, our mission should be to reduce the blank voting. When I ordered my thank you cards a few months ago for donations, I had them printed up to say, "Vote blue, vote for two." And that's constantly what I say to people. And if we can manage to have the funds, I think signs that have two names that say "Vote for Two" would be fabulous, because people are not used to voting for two candidates. And I think that really impacted the race last time. And frankly, bullet voting did as well. And whoever the candidates are, I hope it's me, but whoever the candidates are, we will be out there educating people to make sure that the number of empty votes is very, very, the blanks are very, very small. And, and when, if, when that happens, we will have two new Democrats to join Ron Bergstrom. So, thank you.
Ron will be happy. I have two more coming, Steve.
Yep.
Can I ask one? Okay, here's the first one. This is the question that wants to know, what oversight do the commissioners have over the sheriff and ICE, Section 287 agreements?
Mark, you're on first for this one.
Well, when we restructured the county not too long ago, we saw the state, the state take over the sheriff's office. So the county has limited, there was a time when the county did have some control over the sheriff. The county had to approve and sign off on the sheriff's budget. Back when I was in municipal government in Provincetown, I served as the Provincetown representative on the Finance Advisory Board with other local officials from across the Cape. And my assignment was the sheriff's budget. So I was part of the sheriff budget subcommittee. And back then, we did have some control. We did have some say. But that's been changed. The folks that have the most direct control are the legislators and the state administration. Do we have control over ICE? No. Immigration, Customs Enforcement, that is a federal agency that we have no enforcement- that we have no, uh, enforcement or no ability to really, uh, control. However, the, the, the point of the matter is, is that this is the Cape. If the, they are doing things that we believe are inappropriate for Cape Cod, there's no reason why we can't use the bully pulpit and speak to those issues. And to the extent that there are legislators or others that might have some leverage or oversight with respect to budgets, um, we can certainly engage with those individuals as well. Uh, but the important thing is not to sit on the sidelines, but to stand up, to speak out and to be heard loudly and clearly.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Cheryl, and I'll ask you to, to take that from, um, you know, kind of the back half of, of Mark's answer where, uh, county government doesn't have any influence over the, uh, the sheriff's department. But what are some things that you think, um, a county commissioner can be effective in, in terms of leading the community on that issue?
Well, it, it, it is. It's, it's very confusing for people when they see a truck go by that says Barnstable County Sheriff. And you can't blame them for thinking that somehow they're part of Barns- Barnstable County government, but they're not. Um, and Mark certainly gave you, uh, plenty of, you know, great answer because he's, he's right. As far as, uh, leadership from Barnstable County, there's, there's a real vacuum there right now. Um, if we had three strong, like-minded, uh, Democrats there, um, we could, I could easily envision, um, a county government that would start to influence, uh, opinion on the Cape and work with other Cape leaders, other Cape selectmen and counselors and really develop position, you know, papers on issues like this to, you know, if you don't have the, the legal authority, you can at least have the political authority and that certainly could happen. Um, but it, it won't happen unless you have a board of commissioners that's reasonably like-minded on these kinds of issues.
Thank you. And Sheila?
Well, I already said that, um, at one time when they, when the Colombian children were being brought to the base, I already stood up and tried to, uh, make a stand there. And if we have a unified board, we can make, um, leadership decisions and call those types of actions out. But whether it's, um, it's the sheriff on ICE or, or, or just the immigrant issue alone, I have, I am now currently working at Outer Cape Health and I help people with their healthcare. I'm a healthcare specialist and most of it is with the working poor of Cape Cod and, uh, the immigrants that are here all and, and working for their green cards, having their green cards. In between their green cards, they put their application in for extension. And that's where a lot of people will look at them saying that they're not, they're not legal. But they've just lived here, you know, four years. They're looking for their extension. They're not really illegal. They're, somebody in Washington is holding that up, especially today. Everybody's at a standstill. So I think my role would be to be able to educate the people of Cape Cod about what the immigrant experience is today. It is not a bunch of people coming here just trying to take our resources and get free things and just living off of nothing. These people are working harder, harder than most people on this, on this chat. Now they're, and they're making money, but not enough. And they can't even get the resources. So people need to be educated as to what ICE is doing and what the immigrant issue is doing, which is draining more money from our taxes. This is another, by take, getting rid of immigrants, you're getting rid of 15% of our G, GDP. So, so this is all things that I would be very, very happy to use that, that bully pulpit and educate and enlighten people as to how precious and important our immigrants are on this Cape.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anything else?
More. Do you want more?
Um, yeah, get one more and then I'll get back to some of the things that I got from you.
I have one that says, I'm interested in knowing in light of the departure of Mary Pat Flynn, if and how the county can help the upper Cape in the upcoming era of bridge replacement.
And Cheryl, you've got that first.
Well, that's a good one because, uh, the folks that were involved in the planning, um, that has led up to where we are right now, uh, gave a presentation to the Cape Cod Commission, of which I'm currently Provincetown's rap, about, I think it was last summer, see the last, I think it was last summer. And I basically flat out said, so what role, you know, does county government have in this? And was pretty shocked to hear the answer was none. Um, much like the county sheriff's office, um, there's not really any structural, um, legal authority for us to get involved. Having said that, it would be, um, it would make no sense if county government sat by and didn't offer assistance and, uh, deal with this because I can't imagine anything that will have a more profound possible impact on transportation on the cap- Cape in our lifetimes as, as new bridges. They're talking about instead of, um, two bridges with four lanes, they're talking about two bridges with six lanes. Now, I'm rather curious how that'll all work at either end of the bridge. If you take traffic off of two and then put it on three and then put it back on two again. So, um, you know, any of us that have sat waiting to get over that bridge for an hour, um, know how important this is, what we had to deal with the flyover. And, and the county should be at the table. The Cape Cod Commission absolutely should be allowed to bring their expertise to bear on the design. And obviously, as we've all said, you know, it's Bourne. It, it's the town of Bourne. So you have to assist the town of Bourne um, and work with the selectmen and the town administrator there and, and the state now, as opposed to in the old days, the Army Corps. So, um, there's a lot of work.
Well, there you go. And Sheila?
So actually our seat at the table is through the Cape Cod Commission. They have the seat at Mastaut and also, uh, it is escaping me, what's the, uh, where you get all the budget, you know, the meeting where everybody goes to the MPO? Am I saying that right?
Yeah. That's the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yeah, Metropolitan. So, um, that is our voice and that is how we're going to, um, be informed and as they should be. They are our transports, they are our planning and transportation department and, and help with that. So we will have, um, a report on that all the time. We will be able to give our opinion, uh, as much as anyone in, in the public will. But we will be able to also take, you know, listen to the public and if they're not being listened to, help that happen. But our seat is through the Cape Cod Commission. So we do have influence there and it is through that agency.
Thank you. And Mark Forrest, sir?
Um, I, I agree. The MPO is clearly where we have a, a voice. Um, but let me also point out something else. I mean, the reality is, is that, uh, the funding for this project still has yet to be completely figured out. Um, it's great that the legislators, uh, thought through, uh, led by Sue Moran, uh, worked on the funding and got some funding in the transportation bond issue. Uh, but you would have thought the administration might have put that in in the beginning. It had to be added in. What does that tell you about the priority for this project? Uh, the federal government, where's the money on the federal side to pay for its fair share? They talk about it. They've had an MOU, but things are still on the funding side, moving at a snail's pace. Um, I think as most people here, uh, participating in this forum know, I mean, that's, that's largely the role that I played working for two congressmen. And that was to get the federal money that we need, uh, to do big projects, to get that money here. Uh, I did that on the Otis cleanup. I did that on the, uh, worked on the, the broadband initiative that was started by the county commissioners. Uh, I've done that on a host of other projects, water projects. I've helped, uh, get water funding, sewer funding for a number of Cape communities. This is going to, this is the big enchilada. This is the project that right now, going forward, in addition to clean water, requires a significant amount of money and we need to bird dog it. We should not be passive. We should not sit on the sidelines. We should make sure that we're on top of this thing all the time in prodding people, uh, particularly in the Congress and elsewhere, to get the resources necessary to move it along.
Very good.
And I'm happy to do that, by the way.
Thank you very much. Um, the topic of affordable housing has come up, um, a couple of times and, uh, got a question by email that basically was saying that, you know, even with, uh, accessory dwellings, in-laws, apartments, et cetera, we know that's not going to be enough on the Cape to deal with affordable housing issues here. Uh, we know from the studies with the Cape Cod Commission, there's an ever-increasing gap, uh, between the number of units that are, that are needed, uh, on, on the Cape versus the number that are available. So I want to bring that up as a topic and hear from each of the candidates, beginning with Sheila, as to your thoughts about how we increase some of the affordable housing stock here on the Cape.
Okay. So a lot of this, um, you know, we, I did try to position the county and, and restructure some things so that we could address it in a more, uh, effective way. It was over, uh, the, our HUD money, the home consortium was over at the commission. Um, it was just being managed there. Where really the Cape Cod Commission's job was to, you know, look at the region and where do you strategically best put, um, affordable housing or large housing projects that will, uh, be effective, um, be able to house people to where they can get to work, uh, quickly or relatively quickly. And also look at the environment. You have to balance the environment. So, and then, so that went over to the human services department and they are now leading the consortium and they are doing a, a good job in helping that. And they're working with various organizations across the Cape. But we have to remember that for a long time, the Cape was sort of virgin land and the developers came. They didn't want to have searing because if we sewed, we would overpopulate the Cape. So unfortunately, 250,000 people later, we have, uh, many, many second homes and no sewer system and very little room to build affordable housing where it will not have an impact on water tables. It won't be in a flood zone. We are not putting people at risk by building it where we're building it and that they are near infrastructure. And on the outer Cape, that is even a bigger challenge because, you know, in, on Truro, it's 70% is, uh, national seashore, wealth lead 65. I think Provincetown is pretty close to that, as is Eastham. So our space is limited and that space that's available isn't always, uh, the smartest place to put it because it's either going to be hurting the environment or a critical threat. So, you know, we are there, we can push this, but we have to, um, help people think smartly. And a lot of it does come down to the towns, the town zoning and the town's willingness to go follow through on it.
And Mark, affordable housing?
Um, what I'd like to do is just talk briefly about some of the work that I've done in this area. When I, um, when I was, uh, with, uh, Congressman Studs, I worked on, uh, the initiative to have Barnstable County designated as a federal home consortium. The county is one of the few that have been designated in the country. The idea behind the designation came from the county commissioners who were there and at the time, uh, Rob O'Leary is one of the county commissioners. And what we did was we went to bat for the county at the federal level to get that infusion of federal funds, uh, for Barnstable County. Uh, good leadership at all ends. We were successful. I also worked on, um, making sure that we could get, uh, two Cape towns designated as entitlement communities for community development block grant funds, uh, to mid-Cape communities to help, uh, provide more funding for rental assistance, housing rehab and a host of other housing initiatives. Um, I also worked on, one of the founders of the Community Development Partnership, back in the time, it was the Lower Cape Community Development Corporation. Uh, its mission clearly is affordable housing and small business assistance. Uh, but affordable housing is sort of the main focus of its, of its, of its agenda. And, um, more recently, um, I was the, I was the chairman of the Board of the Housing Assistance Corporation, uh, which serves the entire Cape. And hack, as many people refer to it, um, when I was chairman, we put out a report that sort of laid out in detail what the problems were, what's causing the inventory of affordable housing to shrink and almost disappear, what those pressures are. And it laid out a whole blueprint, a set of, uh, recommendations in terms of how to, how to deal with it. Um, and so what I'd like to be able to do as a county commissioner is sort of work from this blueprint and get the county back in the game, uh, in a more aggressive way like it was before,
10 seconds?
On the, on the affordable housing crisis. So I think that's an area where, where we can certainly start. Federal funding at the, at the, has to be a part of the key. We have to advocate for more federal funding for the Cape.
Great. And Cheryl, your thoughts on how we increase affordable housing?
Well, um, thank you. Um, I'm always proud to talk about affordable housing and, and do a little cheerleading for Provincetown. We're awfully close to hitting the 10% goal, although we'd like that number to go up anyway. Um, and I will say that yes, I think our town is probably about 75% seashore. So, you know, we've got land, land issues up here too. And the way we got to where we are today, I would say, you have to have fundamentally three things. First of all, you have to have the desire. The town has to decide they want it. Um, if they don't, they fight you over and over and over for years. Um, so there has to be a real campaign, uh, to explain to people why it's critical to your town to do it. Once you get the desire, then of course the next thing we talk about is the money. Um, we just threw the kitchen sink at figuring, at, at this problem, trying to fit, find funding sources. We went after land bank money. Uh, we went to the state, state house with special legislation to do that. They later, later copied that idea, of course, in the Community Preservation Act, um, bill. Um, and we also took local money. Uh, our town manager actually negotiated with a couple of businesses to do some land swaps so that we could have extra land. And then lastly, I would say you need a lot of creativity in terms of coping with what the local impediments are because they are different in each town. And you can't, um, you can't, you know, browbeat your neighbor into this. You have to talk to people. You have to really identify what the impediments are and then knock them down one by one. Um, unfortunately, there's no, uh, you know, club over the towns demanding that they do more right now. And it's up to each town to whether or not they, they want to make this a priority. But if you feel like it, you want to make it a priority, then you should absolutely hold your selectmen and your councilor to the fire because that's really so important. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, anything from the chat you want to get to?
I've got a couple. Um, we have one that says, what are you passionate or excited about tackling if you are elected?
And Mark, you are first on that.
Passionate. Well, I'm passionate about a lot of things. Um, but when we look at really what the, the big challenges are that we're facing, we talked about affordable housing. We have to be passionate about that. I'm passionate about it. Um, one of the things that we did at Housing Assistance Corporation is in addition to laying out a blueprint, we actually created initiatives to build capacity in some of our towns to sort of develop and guide, um, housing projects through. We created a housing institute to build advocacy. Advocacy is very, very important. A lot of times these projects can die because there just isn't enough local support. So passion is incredibly important and passion for affordable housing, uh, clean water. Uh, one of the things I haven't talked about is I'm chairman of the Board, of the Board of Supervisors for the Cape Cod Conservation District. We do salt marsh, salt, uh, coastal restoration projects all around the Cape. On the outer Cape, we're heavily invested into the Herring River Restoration Project. We've been providing funding, staff, resources for that. Um, so clean water projects, whether it's wastewater or coastal restoration, I'm very passionate about. Uh, the other area clearly is in terms of economic development. We as a region need to, certainly affordable housing is a key component of economic development, but we got to protect the jobs that are here. And in this pandemic, find ways to help the small businesses that are here, the backbone of our community, so to speak, weather the storm because, uh, it's a, it's a very, very difficult time right now. Uh, we're, it's, it's very, very challenging. And, uh, the, we need to be more engaged in this, this issue. So those are some of the things that I'm passionate about.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Cheryl, the issues you're passionate about?
Um, well, I'm pa- I'm certainly passionate about the Cape. That's for sure. Uh, the Cape's always been my home. It's my family's home and taking good care of it means a lot to me. Uh, the issues that are sort of front and center on my plate, when I announced this campaign, it was climate change. I felt like the county had been a little bit too quiet about marshaling the resources necessary to really talk about fundamentally the most important issue facing us in our lifetime, in our kids' lifetime. And then a pandemic came along. Um, and so for me, because I'm a doctor and I see a lot of, um, just people confusion on the, on the parts of visitors to the area, residents and even store workers where they just don't know the best way to behave to reduce risk. Um, I'm pretty passionate about seeing, um, our county, uh, health department get a lot more involved in training. Um, the economic stress that we're about to really, uh, experience, once the season is over, which is not going to be a season we're going to look back on well in terms of economics. And plus, uh, depending on how the unemployment situation works out, um, we're going to have to really examine as a county, uh, what role we'd like to play in terms of helping, uh, towns, uh, really rebuild some industries that are going to, they're going to take a hit. They're already taking a hit. I have friends that have closed their businesses that don't plan to reopen. Um, I will say, we like to think that we don't have a big issue with racism on, uh, on Cape Cod. And that's of course because, um, you know, we're a little more subtle about it. Truth is, is absolutely we do. Um, and, um, this year, um, I've certainly been educated about what we can do more on the Cape, uh, to really tackle the issue, to educate ourselves and tackle the issue, to educate ourselves and our friends, and just try and make this place a, a better place to live. So I, I think those are pretty much all of my passions, although I get pretty excited about just about anything because I like to problem-solve, and I enjoy details. So that's me.
Great. Thank you, Cheryl. And Sheila, please.
I'm passionate about people. I think I always have been. I like people genuinely. It's just my nature, which is why I am very upset when I see people not getting along, when it's just so much energy being lost. And that's what led me to be a social worker, and, and I love Cape Cod. I mean, since I was a child, we used to come down here. It looked like a very different place. It even smelled like a different place. You could smell the pine trees. When you came down, you got that exhaustion because the air was different, full of oxygen. And that doesn't kind of give you that same feeling today. And I could also see the change in the water. I was bringing my little girl when she was three, four years old. Now she's going to be 28 next year, next month. And I could see the difference. And it wa, it made me concerned that this was going to be lost, and she would not be able to have this resource. So I am passionate about the world we live in. And, and this is a very precious place that we live in. So that's why I took on the wastewater, the problem. That's why I took on human service problems. That's why I've taken on how can we best connect people. So to me, my passion going forward would be building a robust public health system. It is clear that we do not have a coordinated regional public health collaboration. So we need to take the lead on that, reach out to the community health centers, reach out to the hospitals, reach out to our own public health people, and see how we can build a much more robust system that knows that where each, each department of public health knows its community and has the people to go out into those homes, keep an eye on those people, make sure that our vulnerable are checked in on and that they, and we're helping them. As I say, I'm helping people with their health insurance. I see the working poor. I see the struggles that are going on. I'm very passionate about that. I'm very passionate about the immigrant issue. We, we have a lot of things here, but the one thing that we need to keep pushing is the open Cape. The, the county took the lead on that. It became kind of its own nonprofit, and it should have been partnered. And we have to really help that last mile happen. It's imperative, it goes to show you that we need it in the era of COVID.
Okay. I want to follow up a bit on the, the environment because we got some questions on environmental issues. I know that the Cape Cod Climate Action Network, I believe, was trying to have the commission bulk up what we're trying to do here on the Cape in terms of environmental regulations. I want to know if you're familiar with, with the work they were doing, if you've done anything supportive of the work they did in order to improve the, the standards that the commission is, is setting. And, and just some general thoughts about some other environmental issues that people brought up, like getting to net zero, banning single-use plastics, which has been something that's, that's gone from, from town to town. So kind of a broad question on, on environmental issues. Sheila, I'd like to start with you on this.
Okay, yes, I'm very familiar with that group because it was started by Rich Delaney when he came back from the Paris Peace Accord, and he was very proud and happy. And then he had to go back, and he was there on the night that Trump pulled out of it, and it was very encouraging. So he said, "Well, if we can't do it here, we're going to bring the best practices of that here back to Cape Cod." And he has now partnered with all of the different agencies across the Cape. I do know that there's a big push on the Cape Cod Commission, and I am totally for pushing our ability to have power and influence on this area. I do think that the, if I remember correctly, the Cape Cod Commission has a legislation that they are, they are done by an act, a statutory act. Some of their power might have to be extended through that, through legislation and up their ability to really take this on as a mandate. But I do think that the commissioners, when I was there, we had climate change conferences. We, they, just by bringing out wastewater, brought out the whole other aspect of climate change. And on one of our coastal environmental conferences, I, I did said this before, there was a gentleman there from the, from the Department of Coastal Resources in New Jersey who was telling us about the horrors that happened in Hurricane Sandy. And what he said is, "My advice to all of you is to get to know your neighbor, find, find common ground and like your neighbor because you and your neighbor are going to need each other one day." And here on the Cape, I believe that's true. We don't have the luxury of having tribal warfare here. We need to know each other. We need to know what's happening. And we also have to, and the other depressing thing at that meeting was that we were talking about adapting to climate change as opposed to before it was, we were going to stop climate change. So there's some realities there that we have to confront and hopefully reverse so that we can live, extend the life of this planet so it can recover from our abuse.
Now, if this was baseball, I would have been thrown out for batting out of order on, on this from where I was, but we'll just keep, keep going. Everybody still has a chance to answer. Mark, if you would, on the environment?
Well, the specific questions that you had raised, I'm, I'm very supportive of. I'd like to see the Cape Cod Commission do more. Here on, here in Yarmouth, I'm supportive of, and actually helping circulating petitions to add more climate change questions on the fall ballot, excuse me, on the Fall Town Meeting. We have a Fall Town Meeting coming up, so we'll be talking about climate change. But at the county level, I think we need to do a lot more, much more. And the reality is, is climate change is having a profound effect on the Cape now, and it will only get more intensified in the years to come. I'd like to see us have a county-wide policy. I'd like to have us a five-year strategic action plan. There are other counties around the United States that are doing this. We should, we should be leading the effort since we're almost ground zero for the challenges and the problems of climate change. So I'd like to see the county play a leadership role, not just here, but a leadership role in terms of nationally. There's so much that we have to offer here. We have some of the best institutions, coastal, Sheila mentioned the Center for Coastal Studies. We've got the Woods Hole Research Center, the Ecosystem Center out at the MBL, the Oceanographic Institution. We have sort of a huge cluster of the, the world's expertise right here in our own backyard. And we should tap into it and take full advantage of it so that we can not only help prepare the Cape, but show how it's done to communities and regions around the country.
Thank you. And Cheryl, thank you.
Thank you. Well, Sheila and Mark have both mentioned a number of organizations, educational organizations and nonprofits that bring a lot of expertise to bear on this issue on the Cape. And it's true, they're all there. But fundamental to your question was the role of the Cape Cod Commission. And as you know, the commission is guided by its regional policy plan that's updated every five years. Developments are supposed to only be approved if they are consistent with the plan, and then each town has its own local comprehensive plan that's supposed to be consistent. So it's meant to be an overall regional plan for development on the Cape. And we received a petition over a, about a year and a half ago from an environmental group with 350 signatures, asking, proposing amendments to the policy plan that would deal with the goal of net zero. And it's frankly rather controversial, that, that's a understatement, at the Cape Cod Commission right now. And because the impacts of implementing some of these regulations are profound. And what we have to ask ourselves individually as leaders and as, as members of groups is, are we up to the task? And what I said at the meeting was, you know, what will we say about our work in 20 or 30 years? Will we say we had done enough? I'm not sure we'll be able to say that. And so I've been pushing that issue a little bit with the commission. My feeling is, is that yes, potentially, some of the regulations could mean increased costs in certain areas. Well, then what we have to do is craft plans and abilities to mitigate that and have offsets. If we, as the Cape, can't do it, I don't know how the country's going to do it. And I think we could be, we could be a leader on this issue. So that's, that's, I would ask people to keep an eye on that regional policy plan debate at the commission right now.
Great. Thank you.
I have one, Steve. Do you want me to?
I was just about to go. He tossed it to you there.
So the question is, if the federal government does not redo the measly, renew the measly $600 stimulus checks for unemployment workers, which is not looking good right at the moment, that's an editorial comment by me, what can the county do to ensure that locals, especially undocumented workers, are protected during the off-season?
If you would. Mark, to you first.
What can we do? This, I mean, this is, this is a crisis of significant proportion. If we find ourselves in a situation where the federal government has sort of dropped the ball in a major way in terms of financial help, I think we're, we are in a major crisis. And I think what we need to do is not just convene ourselves, but bring a whole host of other partners that are going to be dealing with this crisis. We need to sort of assess the magnitude of the resources that will be needed. Obviously, there are a number of organizations, particularly Housing Assistance Corporation, very involved in providing emergency housing assistance. But it's literally bringing together organizations like that that can be in a position to provide relief and help. There are a multitude of organizations that have actually sprung up over the past several months to provide help and relief to people struggling to, to sort of survive in, in this pandemic. And I think we, we'll literally have to have a summit to bring everybody together that can play a role in helping address this. We just can't sit on the sidelines and do nothing. We have to bring people together to figure out how we can help people survive this and get through this, while at the same time, demanding action by the federal government. And, I mean, they shouldn't be going home for their August break without dealing with this. And if they do, shame on them. We should join in what would be a universal condemnation of abandoning millions of Americans that are struggling in this time of crisis. So there's no reason why we can't speak out on the, on the, on, on this issue. But I would bring people together. I'd bring all the organizations that are providing assistance to folks, economic assistance, housing assistance, even healthcare assistance, to find out how we can collaborate and work together to respond to what will be a very, very significant problem here.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Cheryl, please.
Yeah, thank you. Mark, well, well answered. That's absolutely right. One of the reasons, one of the millions of reasons we love Cape Cod is because we do take care of our neighbors. And we've always had folks that needed assistance with the basics, whether it was food, heat in the wintertime, clothing, transportation to the doctor, healthcare. And, you know, we've done it on a, on a sort of level where a lot of people don't see it. We have the need potential going into the wintertime when the temperature drops and, and the financial aid drops could be profound. And I absolutely agree, we're going to have to appeal to the best in each town, find out what works the best, and then, you know, do the best we can to coordinate it and assist. This is going to be an all-hands-on-deck challenge. And it's going to go on for a while. None of us really know when the healthcare portion of, the, the public health portion of this crisis is going to level out. And I think we all know the economic crisis is going to get better before, I mean, excuse me, is going to get much worse before it gets better. So I think there's going to be a challenge on all of us individually, all of the towns, and then the county collectively to, to meet the need. And I, I do believe we're going to do it.
Thank you so much. And Sheila, please.
Well, right now, the county is very hard at work trying to help people across the Cape. We have the Human Service Advisory Committee that has, that is a collaboration of, of almost all of the human service departments across, not just within, within the towns, but all of the nonprofits across the Cape. That is already a unified collaborative that, that then rebuilt out of the regional network on homelessness, that regional network on homelessness. When we had good leadership and we were focused, and this is, you know, Duffy, this was myself as, as the chair, but we had very hack, Duffy, many, many organizations that helped lead that. We have got to help our community health centers. As I said earlier in this, we have to build up a public health system. How are we going to help the immigrants? We have got to protect our immigrants. And that was the beginning of this question. What are we going to do for them? I help them every day. I get them on healthcare. I will say the state of Massachusetts, we should be proud of it, and we have to be proud of Charlie Baker. He has really kind of resisted the ICE movement and has backed off on this. And there is a whole mechanism where you can get people through that system, get them healthcare, and they're not at risk. Now, how long that's going to last? He's under pressure. I can feel it. I can see it. So we have got to fight those types of forces for our immigrants and for our working poor and vulnerable here. We have seniors that are living in their homes. I was a geriatric social worker for 25 years before I had my family and got into this, into being an activist and then into politics. But there are a lot of things that are happening here on Cape Cod. They are coordinated. We need to fight for the resources, and we need to educate and connect our communities together so we're helping each other and not hating each other.
Great. Thank you. I want to talk about the Black Lives Matter movement. And I actually really tie that into county government in, in a couple of ways. Early mentioned before, sometimes the racism here is subtle. And if you hear the stories from people, sometimes it's very much not, not subtle. And I can think of something their friend posted on Facebook of an experience she had with, with Barnstable Police just, just recently. There. So on the, the county level, a couple of things I want you to think about and respond to. Other things that need to happen on the county level to remove systemic racist policies or systemic racism at the county level for anything that's, that's being done? And particularly, are there things that we can do in terms of oversight of the, the police academy that will be useful to us in the long run? So with, with that, I'm going to get us back on track with Cheryl, starting with that, please.
Well, thank you. You know, my experience, I do have an, I do have a couple of years' good experience dealing with police department, actually about 20 years up here, both when our police department seemed to be in sync with the community values, and then a period of time where it wasn't in sync, and we had frankly, a lot of trauma and a police chief that was fired, chairman of the Board of Selectmen that resigned. And it was, it was pretty messy up here. So, you know, that's one part of the conversation, which is this so important relationship between the police department and the community. I'm going to struggle mighty hard to never say the phrase "police force," but always "police department." I believe there's a difference. I'm happy to have a police department in my town, not a police force, right down to what, what the uniforms look like that they wear and what they carry on them. The issue of racism, of course, is a little bit different. In, let's just say it's a separate topic that needs to be front and center. I was really happy to read that Barnstable County had taken a leadership role in, you know, creating this local police academy because I've always felt that the most fundamental thing you want in your police department officers is that they're members of your community. They are, they know you, and they're trained locally, and they represent you. So having them trained close to home is really something I'm very, very pleased about. And frankly, if, my other, my other view on that topic is that a police department should look like the community. I think fundamentally, that's where we've gone astray. If, if a, a town is 10% colored, then the police department should, officers should be 10%, and all the way up to whatever percent is appropriate. I think that's critical to improving the relationship. And then, you know, racism goes way beyond the police issue. It, it is profoundly present in almost everything we do every day, and we have to check ourselves and learn to be better and set good examples.
Thank you very much. Sheila, please.
Okay, so we have a district attorney, and we have a court system that has, we have a 2% minority population here. We have like 65% of people of color are arrested and incarcerated. So I just want to say to all of the people listening here, that is an elected seat, as is the sheriff. And it's up in two years. And never, ever is there a Democrat that runs for that seat, ever. So it's like given to the Republicans, conceded to the Republicans, and it actually pays a lot of money. So I'm, I'm not sure why nobody's out there trying to get this job. We need to elect someone there. That said, there's, it is to me that the African-American people of this country fought for civil rights in 1964. And to me, it seems like everybody else has reaped the benefit to the umpteenth degree. And the black people of this country are still struggling. Women got a better deal. LGBT got their rights. The blacks are still being killed in the street. And we watched that even during the Obama administration, and not a word. Everybody sat silent while we watched black men murdered on camera. So if we don't keep So if we don't keep a voice on that and say wrong and demand better and to bring our minority community in with us. At a victory party, I said, here we are, the Democrats, we're, we're supposed to be representing everyone. Where are all the people of color? Where is our Hispanic population? Where are the Brazilians? There's nobody in this room. We have got to cultivate those relationships. We have got to work together for all of us. So I am very, very passionate about this. I think that in the police academy, we need to put money into training and giving mental health to the police. They have their own problems. They go home to their own stress. We have got to teach them human, the human side and take care of their mental health so that they're not out there under pressure killing somebody.
Mark, please.
First of all, black lives do matter. And I think what we need to do is use whatever resources that are at our disposal to find ways to heal the racial divisions that are here within our community as well as in the nation. We have a president that is always dividing us. And that the challenge we face is to find ways to heal those divisions, to bring people together and to better understand and learn from one another. So I think that's important. I think, you know, in Yarmouth, we've had a couple of instances of hate crimes. And we as a community need to do more to sort of look reflectively in terms of what we're doing in our community. How can we bring to people together in our town? There are groups that are doing some very interesting things around the Cape. I think we need to do more to, to examine what, what successful models already exist here and how we can spread those and get other communities involved in this enterprise. The county has two sort of resources at its disposal, which need to be fully utilized in this effort. One is the Barnstable County's Human Rights Committee. And they play a very, they can, they can play a very, very important role. In recent years, they've almost been dismissed and in some cases, their funding's been threatened or almost cut. We need to take a completely different tact and find ways to utilize them more fully in this effort. The police academy is another opportunity. It's well led. Peter Carnes, I know, is, is running it. He's an outstanding leader. The county's fortunate to have him. And I know they're also looking at ways in which they can do more to help deal with some of these issues and these challenges. But this, this is something that has to be on the agenda for the county. There's no doubt about it. And I will certainly make sure that it is as, as the next, as a new county commissioner.
Thank you, Mark. Robin, anything from chat or I can?
It's you. It's you.
You got a few. All right, let's, all right, well, we're, we're pretty close to, Robin, why don't you, why don't you go ahead?
I don't have anything, Steve.
Oh, you don't have anything?
Well, no, I think we pretty much covered things. I mean, this question.
Yeah, I, I've got more.
Okay, you got more? Go for it.
More. And Sheila, I'm going to be starting with you. I know you mentioned healthcare before and it's, it's a very bright topic. I want to focus particularly on women's healthcare issues on the Cape and how the county might get more involved with that. We know about the situation with Falmouth Hospital and their, and their closings. We know about, you know, women who are trying to deal with getting a safe, legal abortion. There are struggles up and down the Cape, in particular for women to seek and find good healthcare options. What can be done on the county government level to be able to help this situation?
Well, I think that we can, we can give voice to the fact that there are not services here for women. There are not the clinics. I mean, you know, it really was about contraception, Planned Parenthood. It's about planning your parenthood. And, and, and the question about abortion is having a safe and private procedure between yourself, your doctor, your partner, and your God. It's not about government and it's not our business. So I actually didn't realize that we didn't have abortions on the Cape, that you could not get an abortion on Cape Cod until about five years ago. So it goes to show you how old I am. But it wasn't a part of my issue. But that is really, really hard. Now, as in my capacity, I have helped several women, young women, get abortions and mass health does not block that. So that is another good thing. I have to, you know, keep giving it to our state here because they are doing yeoman's job. But we have got to bring in those services, even if we had a clinic on Cape Cod that was primarily for women in, in these areas. And there's, there's, it's just not about abortions. It is about birth control. It is about educating women and young people. It's happening in schools and schools are having a tough time doing it. My daughter told me that it's definitely, you need to have sex education in the schools because they educate you much more about STDs, about things that if it's happening to your body, you will recognize them. And you're not going to get that same amount of education, nor will they feel as comfortable listening to it from their parents as they do from a, a teacher and someone that's not in that role for them. So it's, these are things that we have got to push and make sure that they are there for young women and women of all ages.
Thank you. Mark, please.
Let me talk just briefly about some of the things that I've done to help improve healthcare on Cape Cod. One of the things that I, I'm very proud of is convincing the Veterans Administration and working with, obviously in the congressional office, to open up a VA healthcare center here on Cape Cod. For years, veterans, both men and women, have had trouble getting access to the, the care that they're entitled to after serving this country. And not too long ago, we were able to convince the Veterans Administration to basically put resource into establishing a clinic right here to provide primary healthcare services in Hyannis for Barnstable County. I think that's a facility that needs to be expanded. And I think we need to play a more active role in finding ways to do that and getting more resources there. I also played a role in getting the mid-Cape area designated as federally underserved. In the business of healthcare, one of the things you learn is they don't speak English. They speak in acronyms and all sorts of funny designations that are almost impossible to really figure out and understand. But one of the things that I learned very, very early is, is that the federal government has this designation called federally underserved areas. And if you can get an area designated as underserved, then what it does, it opens the door to all sorts of resources to come in to provide health services to the people who need them the most. And so I'm very proud of having had a role in getting that designation, particularly for the mid-Cape area. The organization that perhaps has benefited the most from that has been Duffy. Duffy would not have existed, would not even be here but for that work in creating that designation. I like to, I'd like to say to people that I'm pretty tenacious when it comes to fighting for the Cape. That's something that took several years of battling again, like the VA with the federal government, to get that designation here. I think we need to play a role in, as Sheila had mentioned, identifying the gaps in healthcare services for women and doing more to fight for those dollars and resources here. We can do it, we should do it.
Thank you, Mark. Cheryl, please.
Thank you, Steve. You know, Mark was just talking about certain types of federal designations that can work to benefit an area. And I happened to experience that when Keith Bergman was our town manager. A lot of folks look at Provincetown and assume it's filled with very wealthy people. Well, yeah, in the summertime, we have our share. But when, when you take a look, and especially 20 years ago, but still now, when you look at the average income of the year-round residents, I think you might be surprised at how low it is. And Keith took, took advantage frankly, of that situation and made the best of it for the town by applying for various federal grants and programs for underserved towns. And we did very, very well. And that's just behind the scenes, you know, boring to many people, but crucial to the people that get the help. Kind of, you know, bureaucratic work that, that can really bring resources to bear on an issue. And then the second thing that Sheila was talking about is, is interesting about various problems that exist on the Cape that we're not aware of. And certainly, it's, it's, the farther an issue is from, say, the members of the county commissioner, the less likely they are to know about it. There's only three of them for all, you know, there are over 200,000, 250,000 people that live here. And that just shows that, that the county commissioners need to get out more. We need to meet more people. We need to interact with more groups. Frankly, it doesn't cost a penny to organize a forum where Barnstable County helps put it together and helps groups meet to learn more about what the needs look like on the Cape and what kinds of assistance the county can provide. So there's clearly a communication issue between the populace and the county commissioners. And that's no surprise because of some of the leadership that's been there in the last few years. These folks wouldn't think of that board as being a resource. Well, let's change that. I think we're going to change that this fall and next January. I look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think in, in the interest of keeping this to, to an hour and a half and, and the folks that have stayed, it's very much appreciated. We'll go, we'll go to closing statements in a moment and we'll, we'll start with Mark on, on the closing statements. What I do want to mention to folks after we do the closing, closing statements, give me a second to stop recording. And then folks are welcome if they want to unmute, put themselves on video, hang out and talk and chat, whether it's with the candidates or each other. Once I stop recording, folks are welcome to do that. I'll keep the, the room open if, if people are looking to, to have a conversation that way.
Let me say a couple of things.
I just want to ask a question. In the beginning of this, Steve, you were talking about the chat and the questions on the chat. Cause I do find those very interesting and we, maybe we didn't get to all of them.
Let me talk about it, Sheila.
I know. So how do we get those?
So there's three little dots at the bottom of the chat. When you open up your chat.
Okay.
There's three little dots. If you click on those three little dots, it says save chat.
Thank you.
And that will save it for you.
Wanted to make sure that I knew before we shut that, this part of.
The other thing is the three candidates might want to put their contact information into the chat. So anybody saving it will then have it.
Okay, thank you. Proceed, I'm sorry.
Very, very good. Good. No, that, that's okay. Mentioned at the beginning and as a good mention at the end there, Robin. Thank you on that. Two minutes for closing statements, beginning with Mark, please.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for participating and being here tonight. I want to thank the other candidates for making it a lively discussion. But I also want to point out something here. We've all been talking about some of the problems with the county. But one of the great things about the county, I, I need to say, is we got Ron Bergstrom there. And while we've been taking shots and we've been lobbing our grenades, so to speak, the reality is, is that Ron has been doing a yeoman's job and deserves a great deal of credit and support for what he's endured in, in, in recent months. So let me just say that. None of that, none of this, to the extent that there's any criticism, none of it is directed to Ron. I applaud him for his work and I congratulate him for all his, all the success he's been able to achieve. So let me just lay that out there. I know I'm eating up my good chunk of my, my two minutes here by putting accolades for Ron, but I think it's important. People need to understand that we all, we need two new county commissioners. And I believe that I have a track record of accomplishment. I know how to get the most out of this office, having worked with some good county commissioners over the years. I, I think we can get a lot done together, working with Ron to sort of tackle the challenges that are facing the Cape, whether it's dealing with the problems associated with the pandemic that will be with us for a while, whether it's finding ways to heal some of the racial divisions in our community, whether it's clean water, whether it's climate change, affordable housing, all the issues that we've talked about tonight. The best way to address them is to elect two of the strongest candidates that are here before you to join with Ron. So Ron, help is on the way. Hang in there and I ask everyone for your support and on September 1st. Thanks for being with us tonight and thanks for participating. After the primary, we're going to need every one of you to help us out here to turn, to turn the county blue.
Great, thank you, Mark. Cheryl, please for closing statement.
Certainly, thank you. And thank you all again for joining us. I just really want to touch on three things about me that I bring to the table. It's awkward for me, believe it or not, talking about me. I wasn't raised that way. I guess it was supposed to be a sin. But guess what? We're here for you to get to know us better. And frankly, I think on a lot of the issues, we're pretty much in agreement. So you have to say, well, what, you know, where are the differences? And I think the differences are some of the educational backgrounds, some of the experience and possibly some of the leadership style. I am a doctor. People that, that know me from work know me as Dr. Andrews. I've been a dentist here for 35 years, dealing with an awful lot of patients that were older with medical conditions or folks with AIDS or HIV or hepatitis. So I've been dealing with virus as a healthcare provider for my entire career. And guess what we need at county? I didn't expect that when I decided to run for office. But we are in the middle of a public health crisis dealing with a, a brand new virus. And I'd be happy to bring my expertise and training to the county. Secondly, we are in the middle of the beginnings of an economic crisis. And I will bring my 14 years as a selectman and my four years on the Assembly of Delegates Finance Committee to bear because we're going to need to really tear apart the budget process to make sure every dollar goes in the best place possible. And that, that's critical that we do that detail work. And then lastly, as far as my leadership style, my favorite thing to do is meet with people that kind of completely disagree with me. Because the way you get to success is you find some middle ground and you build on it and you build consensus. When we began our sewer here, I think his name was Butterfield from the Southeast DEP. He came to Provincetown and he said, when you find, finally get your plan done, if everybody in town is a little bit dissatisfied, you probably did very well. Your job is not to make one group happy and the, and the other group miserable. And we did that. That's how it got passed here. You have to do consensus building. People have to give and take a little bit. And that's the style of leadership that I enjoy bringing to some of these very difficult projects. And I look forward to bringing that to the county government and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Sheila, the last word is yours.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I do want to thank everyone here tonight and I, under normal circumstances, I would have met each and every one of you by now. When I ran for county commissioner in 2008, I put 50,000 miles on my car and I did a 15-town campaign for a year. And I met every single person I could and shook their hands from people in lines at the supermarket to out on the street. I, I started to lose, I had no shame by the end. And I have worked with those towns and I have worked with the people in those towns. And I have grown to love each town for its own beauty and uniqueness. So I care about all of that and I know this job. I was elected in 2008 and I was re-elected under very dire circumstances in 2012. I was being dubbed the WMWRA because of my leadership. And in 2000, when we were first elected and my focus was on that wastewater, we went to the town of Yarmouth. We asked them for $150,000. We worked with their townspeople. They had bought into it, the leadership of the town. We go to town meeting and we were told, there is no problem here. And if there's a problem here, you don't know what you're talking about. You haven't got that science, right? What makes you think you know what you're doing? So we had to do a community engagement, rethink about how we were going to do this. That led us to the 208, that led us to a, a community engagement plan that you should check out on the Cape Cod Commission's website. It is a lesson in community engagement, but it takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of listening. It takes incorporating ideas that you weren't really thinking were going to work and bring them into that plan and bringing them in. And then you will get what you want. Five, two months ago, the town of Yarmouth told, made a vote of $5.2 million, not 150, they invested in their wastewater treatment plan. So that is the effort of 10 years' work that is government. It doesn't happen overnight, but it needs constant attention. It needs all of our, our work and energy. And that is why our country is the way it is. We're not paying attention and doing our part to make it work. So I ask you for your support. I know the job and I am ready to go day one.
You owe me like 15 seconds.
Oh, we still have 15 seconds? Okay, well, I mean, well, I just basically told that, but I, I do know this job and I think now.
I want to thank all the candidates. I want to thank our three candidates for taking part in the forum. You know, running for office is, is a brave thing. Particularly in, in these times when the challenges are great and we are, we are lucky to have the, the three of you, three of you running right now. Let me stop recording.